All right. We're going to go ahead and get started and welcome to everyone who is here tonight. It is Thursday, January fourteenth, 5:30 PM. We're meeting for our study session in the boardroom on Legacy Campus. And we will begin with our roll call.
Larry Jepson, Board Member.
Randall Bagley, Board Member.
Steve Norton, Superintendent.
Roger Pulsifer, Board Member.
Kathy Christensen, Board Member.
Jeff Nielsen, Board Member.
Terry Rhodes, Board Member.
Dale Hanson, Business Administrator.
And Chris Corcoran is excused. Tonight Jeff will lead us in our pledge and give us our mission statement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you. Okay, um, public comment. Okay. All right, we'll move on to the board business then. And tonight we have the swearing in of the re-elected school board members. And then we'll have our elections for a new president and new vice president. And Dale is the one who's going to be doing this.
So it's my honor to swear in four new board members. They're not new board members, they're all incumbents, if you want to call it that. So tonight I've got Larry Jepson, Kathy Christensen, Chris Corcoran, if he were here, we'll have to do that at another time. And Jeff Nielsen.
Okay.
And so if I could have maybe the four of you come up here, that'd be great. And then, um, so currently the offices of Board President and Vice President are two-year, I guess actually elected by the, the board members here, so we call them election. So it's, it is time to, to vote in new board, a new board president and new, uh, board vice president for another two-year term. And, uh, so first I'd say thank you Kathy for everything you've done this last few years. You've done a super job.
Thank you.
Things have, I mean, you've led us through some pretty difficult times.
These people did it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is a great board. Yeah, we really enjoy this.
Thank you.
So I would take nominations for, uh, Board President, Cache County Board of Education.
I nominate Terry Rhodes to serve as Board President.
I second the motion.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? All right, um, we could take a vote or we can just say.
By acclamation.
You're in by acclamation.
Let's do that.
Uh, let's do that. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Terry.
Maybe I could nominate somebody else.
It's a little slow.
Too bad, too late.
Okay, so Terry, congratulations. And I take nominations for Board Vice President.
I nominate Kathy Christensen to serve as Vice President.
And I second Kathy Christensen for Vice President.
Do we have any other nominations? You're making this too easy. So Kathy, congratulations.
Okay, anything else we have to do on that Dale? Okay. Um, alrighty, um, on our consent agenda, we just, uh, have one item to vote on. And that's the LEA-specific license for educators. And, Mike, have we heard about this already? Okay.
Craig asked me to add this because periodically he'll have to have teachers, by following the state law, he has to have board approval for teachers as they change during the year for this LEA-specific license. And he, he wanted to put it under the consent agenda because they're by name, uh, the lists in there, the teacher names. And so that's the reason they're there. And this could happen two or three times during a school year.
Okay. Um, I'll take a motion then to approve the LEA-specific license for educators. Is it for five people that are on that list? I can't remember.
Yeah, there are five.
Five, okay.
I make a motion to, to the consent agenda for the specific license for educators.
I second.
Okay, anybody have questions or concerns?
I do. Is this, does this repri, list represent all of the LEA-specific licenses in our district right now?
Right?
Uh-huh. Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any question? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Oops.
All the votes are in and unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, um, just this past week, I was out at South Cache and, um, Principal Doug showed me a part of the building that was having new classrooms put in it, which I hadn't heard anything about. And so I thought, well, maybe others haven't heard what's going on out there and in other places. So, um, we have asked Bruce to come and just give us an update on what's happening with our building facilities as far as new buildings that we may not know about since the last time you were here.
Is that on?
Yep.
Um, it's hard to believe that it's been two years since we first started considering the ESCO, the energy project that we contracted with Johnson Controls to do. But, uh, we're just about wrapping that project up now. And it, uh, it's been, it's been a challenge. It's about a fifteen million dollar project, as you're aware. I was looking over the list today, there's over a hundred and fifty line items. So I'm certainly not going to try and update you on all of those, but we'll be here all night. But, um, one of the, one of the, the biggest one, and the probably the one that's going to generate the biggest savings to the school district is the lighting upgrade that we did. We removed all of the fluorescent fixtures or tubes in the district. I think just about every fixture now that we own is an LED, uh, light fixture. Over, over thirty thousand light fixtures that were retrofit. Over a hundred and twenty-five thousand LED tubes that have been installed. There's not a classroom in the district that was, wasn't touched. Every building had, had some work done in it in regards to that, that lighting upgrade. In addition to retrofitting all those lights, we've also put in motion, uh, sensors in place of most of the wall switches in rooms. And so when a room is vacated, the lights will turn off. That's, that's a huge savings when you look at our gymnasiums and those, those big spaces that quite often you would go out and nobody in the room in the gym and all the lights on. So that, hopefully that's a thing of the past. You may hear the occasional complaint from a teacher that I'll be sitting in my room, maybe grading papers. I'm the only one in there and my lights turn off. We just tell them that's, that's our forced exercise plan. You'll have to get up and, and move around occasionally to get your lights to come back on. But, uh, unfortunately, I don't have any numbers I can share with you about what kind of savings we're generating. A lot of the buildings were just recently completed, so we haven't lived with them long enough. Some of the schools that were finished early on, I could share that data with you, but I think it would be a little misleading because our, this wasn't a typical year, as you all know. So I, the savings would probably appear to be greater than it really is just because of how, those months that we were out of school when COVID first hit. So it might be something interesting for you to look at or get a report from us, uh, maybe in a year from now. We'd have some really good data that we could share with you on what kind of savings we're seeing. One of the other things that we did with that project is we did what's called power factor correction. And I don't want to get real technical, but, uh, sometimes when you have a lot of motors in a building, it, it, it messes up the sine wave on the electricity and it causes your consumption to be higher than it should be. And there's equipment that can be installed that corrects that. And so we did that at, at Ridge Line, Green Canyon, the district office in Spring Creek. And it, one of the interesting things that happened with that is after we had done the, the installation, about a month or two later, we got a call from Rocky Mountain Power wanting to know what we had done in those schools. I think they thought maybe we had gone in and bypassed the meter or something. Because it, it, it really dropped our power use at those locations. We've done controls upgrades at several schools, our centralized HVAC controls. That's probably not a real popular thing with the users because it takes away their ability to go over and bump their thermostat up and down. But it certainly does a lot to help us control costs. It allows us to put our buildings into setback temperatures when the buildings are unoccupied, which according to the Department of Energy can save you as much as fifteen percent per year if you'll do that. So it gives us that ability. It also keeps people from turning their thermostats way out of what, what would be an acceptable range. So good savings there. We've done weatherization to a lot of the buildings. Just an interesting fact, over a mile of caulking, I don't know if you've ever run a beat of cul.
A mile?
Go out and run a mile.
Wow.
Over two miles of, of insulation, foam insulation at the, the wall, roof interface, that tends to be a, a problem area in older buildings. So they did a lot of that, over two miles of that, a lot of weather stripping. We replaced all the, the Plexiglas skin on the greenhouse at, at Mountain Crest. Just a lot of little things like that to keep our buildings from, from leaking quite as badly as they had. Also part of this project was fire alarm upgrades. As you're aware, it's been a little over five years ago, the state mandated that we put carbon monoxide detectors in all of our buildings, and that's been a huge undertaking. Two of the biggest projects that we still had hanging out there was, was Skyview and Mountain Crest. And we were able to get those done as part of this contract. And we're still looking to do the remaining schools that are on the list, just a few, North Park, North Cache, uh, River Heist and South Cache. And we'll be completing those next summer under this contract. So it'll be good to have that finally finished up and checked off. One of the last major things that we're doing, uh, with this project is the solar panels on Lewiston Elementary and Summit Elementary. The panels are all installed and the electricians will be doing the, the electrical tie-in this weekend. So we'll, we'll start to put those in operation. Just a point of interest, the, uh, generating capacity at Lewiston, four hundred and fifty-four thousand kilowatt hours per year, which is slightly more than what we actually consume in that building. Uh, the only problem is, is you don't necessarily, your panels don't generate the power exactly when you need it. A lot of it's generated in the summer. So the excess power, the, the Rocky Mountain Power does actually purchase it back from you. I guess the, the only real way to utilize it fully would be to put some kind of a battery, a bank in that building, which people are starting to do now more and more as battery technology gets better. That's not part of our project, but something we might want to look at, uh, down the road. As far as, so that, I don't know if there's any questions about that, that particular project that you might be interested to have answered. As far as other construction projects in the district, not a whole lot going on right now. As, as you mentioned, we've got the, the remodel at South Cache, the old metal shop that was pretty much just sitting empty. Uh, we're, we're dividing that up and, and creating three new classrooms in that space. That project is scheduled to be finished in time for the start of the third trimester. So that project is going on. Other project we've got going on right now is we're building a press box on, for the softball field at Mountain Crest. One of the things I'm most excited about that project is it'll finally make that field ADA accessible. We, we've been in violation of the accessibility law with that field. And so this'll, this'll bring that into compliance as part of that project. Future projects, we're, the architect, Design West, is currently working on the drawings for the classroom addition at Green Canyon High School. Right now's a good time of the year to be bidding projects. Contractors are looking to fill up their calendars for the year, the coming year. So our goal is to, uh, put that out to bid towards the end of January first of February. And we're hoping, we're pretty optimistic that we won't spend a whole lot more than what we did at Ridge Line. I mean, most, the, the common perception is the cost has gone up like crazy. But, uh, in talking to our contractor just today, he's pretty confident that, uh, that the prices haven't gone up much. We'll see. Sometimes you don't know until you bid it out, but, but that's his gut feeling. Another future project we're working on, uh, Mike Lipton asked me to look at, uh, maybe taking, taking one of the computer labs at Spring Creek and converting it into a kind of a career center. There's, there's a need out there for more offices for counselors. So we're, we're looking at, well, the architect, Design West, is currently putting together a, a design for a project out there where we could create these, these additional counselors' offices and a, like a little career center. So that's, that's coming. That's about all we have currently going. I don't know if there's any questions about any other projects. We've, we've recently completed some projects. I don't know if you're interested in hearing about those, but, uh, this is pretty well what's on the, on tap right now.
What else have you completed?
Well, the, uh, you've probably seen the, the conference rooms down at the district office that we just completed, those four conference rooms. We've completed the athletic.
Bottom area, the, the.
The, the, yeah, the back end of the office. And that, that pretty well completes everything of the office, I think. We've pretty well gone through it from top to bottom and front to back. We've built the, uh, storage building in the back, about a twenty-five hundred square foot storage facility on the back end there. Recently completed the athletic field parking lot at Mountain Crest, east of the, the football field. It'll primarily serve the, the, the baseball field, I think is the main driving thing that was behind that project. But it'll also help serve, uh, the football field. That adds about a hundred, a hundred and eighty stalls.
And that also, the, the parking for two new fields eventually, that will be the soccer fields in, in that area that we now use Johnson, Johnson's construction property. And that was a nice deal until they started realizing it wasn't being used for farm bases and started to be charged property tax. And so we wanted to get out of that, but we haven't, just haven't had enough money. But if you go up there and if you ever went to a Mountain Crest baseball game, it was like off-roading to get back. Had a lot of people that, now that's the only place, uh, that I've had patrons from other schools complain about our facilities was why don't you do something about your baseball team being able to park back there and watch a game? So if you go up there now, it's a really nice driveway to that and parking and, and then that'll also serve as parking for two new fields that are built further east.
So are we doing those new fields soon or?
Not real soon, uh, but they're in, they're in discussions.
So do they go right up to the, where the house is?
Yep. And we cleaned that whole property up. The contractor just said, I'll, I'll take our equipment and we'll smooth out the dirt that had been moved for the project of, uh, putting in the parking lot. And then they went along the fence and picked up all the garbage that had been thrown.
That, that was the original plan. We, we kind of backed away for now. There's so many people up there, they've got trampolines and we thought, okay, we can knock on their doors and ask them to move it and then we'll clean it up. And within a few months, it'll all be right back. And so we thought, let's wait until we actually are ready to put the grass in. We, we did clean it up a lot.
Yeah.
But, but we didn't, we didn't go knock on all the doors and, uh, just, just, uh, if you hear anything about that. There was conception there, but, uh, that, that was the plan. I think I told the superintendent we were going to do that, but then after we looked at it, we just, there's no point in doing it twice because, you know, it's just going to come back until we actually get grass there and maybe put a fence, I don't know, but, uh, but yeah.
So is there's this space between the football field and the housing development on the east side of, uh, Mountain Crest?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's enough room there for several soccer fields. So this parking lot is just phase one of, of developing that property. Another project that has been high on my list for years and years, and that's the, uh, the front parking lot at Sunrise Elementary. It was a real mess, um, to the point where I actually had patrons calling me, wondering if we were ever going to do anything with it. And I, I've been wanting to do it for a long time and budget's finally allowed.
Is that the faculty parking lot you're talking about?
Yeah, yes, the, the, the parking lot that's right in front of the school. And in addition to that, we rebuilt the fire lane all the way around the school. It had the distinction of being the single worst piece of concrete in the district. So we, we're finally able to fix that up. So that's just a, just a small representative sample of some of the projects that we've, we've been able to do.
Bruce has just done an outstanding job of taking care of our physical facilities and I just want to publicly thank him for all that he does.
Us too.
Thank you.
Our buildings look great.
We've got, we've got some real good maintenance people and great custodial staff. I, I can't take much of the credit for what happens, but, uh.
So I should probably know this, but we're, none of those things are being done with bonds, right?
Correct.
So where, where's the money coming?
You'll have to ask Dale or us.
Oh. That money tree?
Yes, a bag for that. And the teachers have always wanted to find out where those bags were. I don't even know where they're at. But no, it comes from, from, uh, capital outlay funds that basically come from the state. Most of that is state-funded, but there's also a local levy that, that we do have that helps pay for some of that. So, what, you share about four or five million?
Property tax is two million. The, yeah, equalization was about three, three.
Yeah. So, and that's permanent ongoing money now that comes in. As before, it was always one-time money, so we never knew. And when things got tight, that went away completely and that put us in a real bind. But now that's ongoing money and pretty safe. And so that's, that's kind of where we pay for those projects. And should be able to do projects like that with that money and still have money left over for him to do roofs and asphalt and all that. So that's been, that's been a nice feature. Uh, that's only been that way the last five, ten years. It's, it's gotten better every year, except for the time when we went into the recession. Now I think it's a pretty stable fund. So that's what helps us do that.
Do, do you think it would be a good idea or a bad idea to kind of get this information out on our webpage of all of the great projects that have been done that taxpayers here have not had to pay for?
They are paying for it.
Well, well, I know, but it's not like in property tax.
Yeah, it isn't.
It is property tax.
It is property tax?
Part of it's paid for with property tax.
Oh, well, maybe it's not such a bond.
Well, the, the part that we levy is, is the property tax. It comes directly from the levy we put on here. The state money is not, they don't, that's really a gift from the other people of the state to our district to help us because it's equalized.
And I don't think we need to advertise it. I think they can see it as they drive by. I don't know.
But it might not, they might not hurt to give an update every once in a while, the projects that are, we're working on and completing just so the public would have an idea. Candice, we can do that. If you'd work with Bruce and, yeah.
Well, it's such a great, I mean, I think everybody's did such a great job on it. And I was so surprised when I went to South Cache and there's these brand-new, um, classrooms that are, um, very modern and tech savvy and awesome. And we didn't have to bond to do it. And I just thought, wow, we really do some good things that probably ought to get out to us especially, but also to the public, so, um, in a positive way of how well our district budgets and plans and is able to do these things. So.
It may bring a few more phone calls the other way too, saying if you're doing all this here, why haven't you done this at this school?
That's true, yeah.
I haven't heard those things, so I, you know, I, there's always something we can do.
Yeah.
I always tell the story of the kid who went from where I was at Westside. He took a job up in Star Valley, Wyoming, and for the first few years that I was here and he was up there. He'd call on just some Friday afternoon and say, I got a couple of cement trucks here and they've got a load of cement. I've done everything I can do, I don't have any place to put it, but you have some? And he'd go, I'd say, just hang up and mind your own business. So we are, there's always projects to do.
Yeah.
But, uh, we're far ahead of what we've been in the past.
Mike, Mike reminded me, I, I told you I wouldn't mention all hundred and fifty of those line items, but there are two, uh, that, that I ought to, that I ought to bring up. And that was that we did air-condition the auditoriums at Skyview and Mountain Crest as part of that project as well. So that's, that's pretty well completed and, uh, should be ready to go when, when, when the weather starts demanding that.
Great, thanks Bruce. Okay, um, next on the agenda, we have the recommendations to retire the policy of elementary purchasing procedure. Gary.
I remember actually when this policy was in place or was put in place, I was teaching at Summit Elementary and Loyal Green told us about it at a faculty meeting. But I don't think Loyal was very happy about it and I never dared spend this twenty dollars that I was allowed as a teacher. I think the idea behind this was if you just came across a deal that you just couldn't pass up at a department store or maybe there was some little item you needed in your classroom, if it was under twenty dollars, each principal was supposed to save twenty dollars times the number of teachers they had in their building for just such an occasion. And the, and the, and the teacher didn't need to ask permission. They could just spend up to twenty dollars, bring that receipt in and they would be reimbursed. When I shared this with our elementary principals here last month in our principals' meeting, not one of them was even aware of this. No one had been asked to ever do this. I'm not aware of any teacher who has actually cashed in on this. And part of the reason is because now we have something a little different. The legislature does give us some money for our teachers. And we just kind of refer to that as legislative money. Teachers in their first three years in, in the elementary receive two hundred and fifty dollars each year. And then after year three, from years four on after that, for, you know, as long as they're there, they get a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So because of that, and, and our secondary teachers also get money. But in light of that, uh, this was not a negotiated item. I checked with Kirk on that to make sure. So I just would recommend that we retire this policy.
Anybody have questions about it?
No, um, but Loreen already put in big letters that it's going to be retired tonight, so.
I think it says recommended to be retired, yeah.
Across that policy, so we probably should do it.
All right, thank you Gary. And then Amanda, twenty twenty-one school fee schedule. Mike.
Nobody was paying attention to because this is something we haven't had happen in our high schools yet. But this, what's happening is our DLI students are progressing up through and they, they hit them at, at Skyview. And that's the Portuguese students. And when they hit their ninth grade, they have the option to take what, what's called the NUEL test. That's the National Examination for World Languages. It's very similar to an AP test. So we're talking about, Skyview called me and says, hey, we have students who want to get ready to take this test and we don't have a fee allocated for this. And the vendor is the one who sets the cost for this, this actual test, just like AP. It's the vendor who sets the cost for the test. And so that can vary based on what the vendor does every year. And so what I've put in here right now is a $98 for this one because that's what it is this year. The student also has an option to take the NUEL practice test to get ready to take the NUEL test. And that's $29. But both of these are, are optional. They don't have to take either one of them. But if a student, most students, when they get to that level in their DLI language, that culminates it where, as far as where the K-12 program goes, is to take this AP version of dual language, the NUEL test. And then once they pass that or they go through that process, then they'll be taking 300, 3,000 level classes at the university concurrent. That's their next step. Because they've hit the highest level that we're offering in public at, at that time. So that's what we're asking the board to amend. We typically don't like to come to the board to ask for an amendment, but this is something that nobody was looking for. And the next year, we'll be having a Green Canyon with languages as well as Ridgeline with DLI languages coming in to finish up. Any questions on that?
In the state board rule that you attached to here, to this agenda item, it says that we will create or amend with stakeholder input. So do we need to, do we have to, what stakeholders have we consulted in order to amend this?
Yeah. And that's like any of the school fees, where we have to make sure that we publish the meeting and we have to talk about it two times. And so I asked the principal Monson that he needed to make sure his DLI parents there at the school knew that this was coming to the board. And if there's any of them that had a question, you know, to be here to listen to it if they wanted to give input. Well, there's not many here tonight. But I'll tell you, those are very, those are very supporting parents. Of course, this, when, when you take a look at the fee, this, this really isn't one that's fee waiverable either, because it's, it's not a required fee, required test either. So we may have to take a look at ourselves internally. If we have someone who's gone through nine years of DLI and they just can't afford it, should we as a district do something to make sure that they have that opportunity? Something we ought to talk about probably. Anna?
So, but this saves them money when they, for college credit, correct?
Yes, it sets them up on a, because it automatically lets them jump other classes at the university level.
Do you know if there's like a certain amount of hour of the credit that they get?
I do not. But I'll, I'll have to have, I'll have to research that for you and give you the answer on what that may clap for them.
Shawna would know that.
Yeah, she would.
Because that seems like a bargain.
There are schools that are ahead of us that have done this.
Yeah.
I think there's, I think three years ago was the first time a group of ninth graders got to that level. So we're, that's already been worked through. We'll find those answers for you.
It seems like it would be a bargain really for any student.
Like the AP, you pass it with a certain score and it, 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 you know, takes the place of several courses. I'm sure this NUEL will do the same. But I'll get you the details.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. All right. Let's move down to the board committee reports. Since we just had our USBA conference, I thought it might be nice for everybody just to take a couple of minutes and just mention something that kind of stood out to them at the conference. I don't know if everybody had a chance to watch or see or be involved in it. If you want to take a bye, take a bye. You don't have to, but we'll start with you, Larry.
I will say, I thoroughly enjoyed Coach Sataki. I left with a great deal of admiration for him that I had no idea his story went as it did. And I, I thought that was.
You'd feel that way about anybody that goes to BYU if you just take a.
Well, we'll pass on that. The other two things, I connected the, the one on unity of the board, the superintendent. The nugget that I came away with on that one that I liked was when the superintendent said, the number one thing for me is, don't surprise me. If there's an issue, come and work it out before. Give me a chance so that I am on top of things. And I, I thought that was a great nugget for building trust between us. And the, the other one, the, I really liked the last presentation with the Everyday Strong in the media center. I almost always worked with counselors and had one or two students that were assigned to be my aides that were square pegs in round holes. They just didn't fit and struggled. And I saw what happened as I was able to spend personal time with them and help them feel safe and feel understood and watched some of those kids make miraculous progress in their life. And I, I think there's great value in, in what's happening with that program.
I did call and have, what's her name, up at the other building, Everyday Strong? Oh, Reese.
Debbie Reese.
Debbie. I called her and asked her to listen in just to see if, first off, if she'd ever heard of it. Second, if she thought it was something that our district would want to be involved in. And then I took the material over to Gary and I think there's some movement and desire to at least look at it further.
Well, it's free, right?
Yeah.
The program is free, 3U.
Yeah. And waitlist right now, but yeah, I think we can, we're gonna examine it and see.
Nice. Okay. Randall?
Yes, I, kind of like Larry, I was very impressed with Coach Sataki's talk Thursday evening. Couple of things I got out of it that really stuck and I remember is how important certain people were in his lives and what a great example they were. And he talked about his father and, you know, trying to get his family back together, get all the kids together and the effort he did. And he'd take two jobs and the story about, you know, working his last day and that he was gonna go in there and he's still gonna be a good example, even though he'd been fired and let go. And I thought, wow, what a great story here to talk about his father being such a great example. And then also when he was in elementary school, you know, he just loved BYU football and he was a shy kid. And he talked about that one BYU football kid, player coming and talking to him and what an impact that was. He just, you know, that was, just made all the difference in the world that he made up his mind he was gonna be a BYU football player. And he did become a BYU football player. So I thought that was just wonderful. And another thing I took about that, took away from that at the very end was, he was talking about people and their different teams they root for. And he says, you know, I want everybody to win. He says, I, I'm an Aggie fan, I'm a Ute fan, a Wildcat fan. And I thought that was great. He says, the, the only time I don't want them to win is when they're playing BYU. And I think sometimes that's kind of the attitude we ought to have, you know? We ought to be supportive of everyone and not just ourselves. And I, I thought those were just two great examples from his talk that I enjoyed.
Thank you, Randall.
And I'll just get all that. Those two stories will go to my grave with me. I really enjoyed them. Vern Henshaw did a nice job of representing superintendents. And the two gals did a nice job of representing board members. As I was listening, I just thought, well, that's not an issue for us and that's not an issue for us. Maybe we could do a little bit better. But I came away from that session thinking we have a pretty good relationship. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate that. This morning, as I was laboring under a migraine, I, for some reason, just got started thinking about what it is in my life that's made this superintendentcy enjoyable and something that I haven't wanted to leave and just get away from. And I decided it comes down to two things. Most superintendents will tell you that they leave the profession because of board superintendent relationships. They just can't stand another, to go to another meeting because it's just no fun. And the other side of the coin is the relationship you have with your employee groups. And I just thought, man, I've had a charmed life. So I enjoyed the sessions. I, I love going down and having that camaraderie and meeting and all that. But I thought they did a nice job in a year when that couldn't happen. And, and I think the three hours was just about right for, and the topics were good. I liked it.
And Roger was involved with his mom.
Yeah, I had problems at home, so I didn't.
Okay. So Jeff?
Yeah. Coach Sataki's remarks were good. I brought all the kids in. They wanted to hear that. And my wife really enjoyed it also. But anyway, yeah, great remarks from him. And then the, the, the relationship between the board and the superintendent was really good. There's a book called The Speed of Trust by Stephen Covey. It's an amazing book and it, it talks about how much you can accomplish when you've got a, a relationship of trust, which I think we've got a very good one. And there are examples of boards and companies that that doesn't exist in. And you can just see how it sets them back so much. And so I'm very appreciative of the way we've been able to develop that trust. And, and that is something that we need to continue to work on to improve that. But anyway, it was a great presentation.
Thanks, Terry.
I appreciated Coach Sataki because I was in on the planning for that. And how many times he told McKay Jensen, I have nothing to tell to teachers. There's nothing I can give to teachers. And McKay kept telling me, just give them a halftime talk, pep talk. You know, we're halfway through the school year. They just need that, that pep talk in the, in the team room at halftime. And I thought he did a great job. The other thing, I think that Steve loved Vern Henshaw's talk because, or Vern Henshaw's presentation because he mentioned Steve by name, you know?
Yes, he did.
And, that's right.
I didn't know how to quite to respond, but I know when he saw, he saw that guy, he said, my gosh, that guy's still with.
But Coach Sataki's comments that I remember the best are when he talked about that if you are kind and make eye-to-eye contact with people, you can actually change lives and not know it, but just that, by being kind and making eye-to-eye contacts with people. And that kind of, to me, went with the Everyday Strong presentation, that I was impressed how that, what they've done with that program makes mental health, helping with mental health, sounds so much simpler than what it does in other programs that I've heard.
I just give, I, I, and I have a counseling background, but some people can start talking and, and I'm gone, I, I'm gone in five minutes because they've lost me in, in language or.
Right. And I, for, for them to talk about that, it's not just, this is not, mental health, helping in mental health is not just for counselors, not just for teachers, it's for everyone. And, and it's that simple. That really intrigues me.
Thank you. Dale?
I was just going back to the section that was Senator Milner, Milner talking about the Amendment G that was passed in the election and what the effects of that might be. So she went on and she, she says, you know, that provided three things. One is that we did now, we're able to move education funds into a dedicated, protected fund, which we've never had before. She admitted that, that in past years, those funds have never been protected. They've been able to be used however the legislature wanted. And so this will, this will help. It also provides for automatic inflation and, and growth increases that we've always had to worry year by year whether that was going to happen. And then it also is creating another, a protected reserve fund there that also will be there for us in times of hard times. The one thing is, is, you know, when the legislature was working last year, they had, they had settled on a 6% increase in the WPU. And there's a lot of things that are in place. And then the COVID coronavirus hit and, and that changed everything. And so they did cut back and finally increased the WPU by 1.8%, where all the other state agencies, they were cutting their budgets. And so they were trying to, to protect us as best they could. And, and they also put 50 million into a, a growth fund that, that we are taking advantage of this year. But they're planning now for this, this year's legislative session to do a number of things. And part of that is to try to restore that difference of the 6% WPU that, that had been first agreed upon and then cut back to the 1.8%. So they, they are working to restore that and would like to do that all in one year, which would be next year. They also want to put another $50 million into that growth, or the stabilization fund that we'd, we'd have there. And then they're also offering a, a stipend to educators so that teachers and that would receive $1,500 and classified employees would, would receive $1,000 prorated if they're less than full time. But that's, it's a great deal. And that is actually anticipated to be passed right at the very first of this session that starts next Tuesday. And they said they would like to have the funds actually out to the schools before the legislative session even completed. So they want to move right on that quickly. And so that'll be, you know, a very welcome thing by, by our employees. And one note is that in next year's budget, you know, they're always worried about now where these funds can be used for, it was for what?
For students, for kids.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember the description of that. But anyway, they, they were saying that in next year's budget, there won't be a penny transferred out of the education fund or work, out of our allotment going to them.
Children and disabled persons.
Oh, so then I got.
So they will fund them out of other sources for this next year. So there won't be anything diverted away from education for this coming year. They're, I think they're going to treat us very well this, this, this coming session. So it was exciting. I, I enjoyed that part.
That's great. Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-ups. And maybe only one because the other one just left. It's gone somewhere. But the, the legislature left out principals and administrators. So I, I, it's always been our family tradition in this district that we treat everybody equally. So I, if it's okay, I will find the resources to take care of our principals and other administrators. Because there's nobody, I, I know everybody's. administrators, 'cause there's nobody, I, I know everybody's worked really hard, but there's nobody who's worked harder than our principals. And I, and I understand the philosophy, but I, that's just not how we operate as a district, so.
I think that's great.
Jenny Earl said today that there's talk on the state board to also offer that stipend to principals. So the state board is pushing the legislature to include them.
I appreciate they, they would do that, yeah.
So for my report, I'm like a couple of you who thought, oh, this is really gonna be a drag. And I actually really enjoyed, I thought I couldn't sit there for three hours and watch the workshops, and yet I was just so involved. And as always, I always look at these things through teacher eyes. But the one thing that kind of stuck out to me, and I mentioned this up at North Cash, this was from Superintendent Dixon. She said that the studies that they have done so far, they're finding that the kids, because of the COVID virus problem, are 20% below in learning loss so far this year. And I really appreciated that she said, "This is probably not something we want to get working on now, but when we can, we really need to be creative in trying to solve this problem." And one thing that, a couple of things that we should do is listen to our teachers because they're doing this stuff already. And North Cash has a really great thing going up there right now with helping to keep the kids who are struggling caught up. She said, "We will probably need more technology help to, with these, with these students and we may, may need to pilot some new models." And that teachers and administrators and school board members should be in that planning part because we all bring different ideas and past experiences to help with it. So I'm just kind of throwing that out.
Yeah, and I, and I'll just tell you, I, Gary and Mike are well aware and have been on this, and I was just in one school today, but Troy Pugnir reported in, in our session that they knew how far behind the kids were and they had made a lot of progress in getting them back on track.
So I think we need their input. I really do, because they've tried some things that are working and, and probably some things that they-
So Gary and Mike, if you have anything to add? I know that's been a concern, how, how far did the kids drop? And, and I know we're also very much concerned about how well kids are doing at home this year.
And the governor's budget recommendation too, they have, I think it's like 30 million set aside for this year's budget to help in pilot projects and everything else, trying to work on student retention, getting them back. And then also in next year's budget, they've got 200 million projected right now is what they'd like to steer towards that. So that is gonna be a major focus here for the next little while.
Well, I- Great. Well, I just feel it's really important that we get a lot of different input from people who are trying right now to work out some things and they're being effective with it and that here on the board, we are involved as well. You know, not all of us, but a few people who want to participate in that as well. Anything else on conference? Okay. They, they probably ought to do that again, that way. It was so quick and fast.
Well, I, I really liked it, but I missed the rolls and the meals.
You're at the coffee shop.
And I got a nice text out from Preston Kirk, just out of the clear blue. This morning when I woke up with my headache, I pulled on my phone and there was Preston Kirk talking, texting me and saying how much he missed it, having, not having the opportunity to be with us and this. And I just thought, boy, a guy that's going through what he's going through to even do something like that, that was really a sweet thing. So that's the thing, you miss and-
And the spouses.
Tying together.
The spouses and the families.
So, yeah.
Okay.
And I didn't like their prize drawing system.
Oh. Cause Dale did not win.
I thought we got skunked, no, not thought, we got skunked again. But I watched that, that reel and I don't think it ever went all the way around once. It just kind of went like this and, and-
Yeah, I wouldn't want to give up the other one, but this was really great.
Yeah, it was.
It turned out really great. Okay.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
So USBA is planning to do some professional development similar, only like hour, hour chunks, either monthly or every other month for the rest of this year, since we missed out on so much by not being able to go to the annual conference. They're just gonna spread it out throughout the year.
Okay.
And have more of those breakout session type themes, but short.
Okay, good idea.
Yeah, and they did say today that the JLC meetings are all gonna be done virtually too, that said the number of school boards are going to meet together to, to be on it virtually with the rest of the group and that, just so they can follow the session through together, but-
Are those like Fridays?
They have them.
So people who work would not be able to participate, but others could? Is that something that's feasible for us to do or not?
No, we could, we could do it.
And you could even participate anywhere you're at, online.
I know principals, I mean, superintendents are, are gonna try and meet at the Grand School District office and I'm not quite sure what they hope to accomplish, but they're, I think it's that camaraderie of just getting together. And, but yeah, it's still gonna be available online.
Okay. Well, we can look into that. All right, so as far as the board president report, I don't have a whole lot of things. This is our new handbook with the new vision statement and the TSSA information and a few other little corrections. I did, when I went to, let me find this, holy mackerel, what did I do with it? When I went to South Cash, I always, when I visit the faculty meetings, I always take a little suggestion box and let the teachers put in things that they would like the district to fix and do better at. And then I give them to Steve and he talks about them and works it out. And I just wanted to read you this one. I mean, this is like the all-time blessing of the pandemic, I guess, is what you could call it. First, number one, this has never happened before. "Thank you to the school board and district personnel for helping us to be in person. I am so happy to be with kids every day. It's best for kids and best for teachers, so thanks for making it possible. The extra planning time to complete online and in-person is appreciated." Second person. "Thanks for the prep day between semesters. It was beneficial. Please add them back into the calendar for subsequent years as well." Third person. "I have appreciated the communication from the distant, the district. I do wish the COVID updates were daily to reflect true numbers. Thank you again for all you do and your support." Fourth one. "I wanted to let you know that I appreciate the prep day between trimester breaks. That was really helpful for me as a new teacher." Fifth one. "Thank you for what you do for education. This is a tough year, but we appreciate what you do." Sixth person. "This is my first year teaching in Cache County School District. I have absolutely loved teaching here. I have gotten so much support from administration and other employees. Thank you." I don't think I've ever had a report where it has all been thanks. So thank you, district folks, and thank you, Lord, for all that you're doing. It's been a rough year, but the teachers, I think, are feeling like we have their backs and we care about them and want to do whatever we can to help them. Let's see. I did have a couple of questions on COVID testing. As far as I have heard from Tim.
Look out there.
We are eligible for the testing. We just have to take our lanyards after we've made our appointment. Is that correct?
You mean that vaccinations?
No, I'm getting to that. This is for COVID testing.
Yeah, the night testing that we're doing.
Yeah. If anybody wants.
Yeah, you can go there anytime. You're on the employee list, so we give them, it doesn't have to be your lanyard, it could be your driver's license. They just need to verify that you're over our place.
Okay. And that's at Green Canyon and, and is it a certain night every week? I can't remember.
It's every night currently from 3:00 to 6:00, but our demand is so low, we're probably gonna have to test those hours down quite a bit for testers. They're sitting there, they're doing nothing.
Can you tell us to, how do we make the appointment? I know you've sent it out.
They're, they're in our website and I'll send it to the board again.
Okay.
But, well, I'm just calling right now, you just go to ccsd.org, our website, forward slash COVID testing. And that's all we make.
Okay. Okay.
Right now, you could probably just walk in. I mean, I know you wanted to make an appointment.
Yeah, so they know, just know you got banned, they don't know a lot of people, so they can just make it.
Do, can spouses do that or not?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. Okay. All right, and then the other thing was the COVID vaccine, which we qualify for being able to set up appointments, correct, with the, the district testing?
Yeah, no, none of you fit in this category except superintendent, but-
Emmy.
If you're 70-plus, the, the county school, or the health department opens that up at 9:00, 6:00, a half hour ago, 720 slots. So if you have a parent or somebody, but my guess is by-
And it was full at 6:08.
Yeah, my guess is it's full. We'll have another meeting next week, so watch for an email from me to your district's email.
Okay.
If I remember, I'll, I'll shoot it out to you. With good, we're only, they're only gonna open up 400 slots for us if we get a vaccine. It's gonna be Monday next week.
Which day?
Thursday.
Thursday. So they're gonna schedule more though then?
Yeah, I visited them today. They're just under extreme pressure by the governor to go with the 70-plus crowd, and so they're trying to do all at the same time.
What time does that start? Because we have a board meeting next Thursday.
Yeah, it'll be 4:00 to 7:00.
Yeah, so I, we, we'll make sure you get the link so that you can get in if you needed to be in before this meeting.
Go right, it's like a meeting.
Go early.
Go a little bit early.
15 minutes early.
Yeah, go about 15 minutes early.
Yeah.
And it doesn't hurt until later that evening or the next morning.
That's what I've heard. But you do have to make an appointment, right?
Yeah.
For it. Okay. So there are a few of us on the board that would qualify for that.
Thank you, Kathy.
The one for the school district, well, matter what your age or-
Oh.
Yeah.
So all of us?
Just because you're, yeah.
All of us, good.
Affiliated with that.
Okay. All righty. And I guess the last thing is just, this has been just a great experience for me to be the president. I was so scared to death about, I am not a good spontaneous person. As you have seen it, I try to name everybody's name for the roll call and whatever else. I have to have everything organized, but you've all been so patient and kind and good and helpful and I just really appreciate. This has been a fun, a fun gig and it's been great to work with every one of you, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
Can I just say your technology skills are like-
They're improving, aren't they?
No, they're like right up there.
Thank you.
You would ride.
I, I actually can get on to a Zoom meeting usually now, so if I have the right date and time. Sometimes I've tried to get on a day late and it doesn't work, but, you know.
Don't let that phrase from him go to your head. He's also said that to me.
Oh, yeah.
He doesn't, he doesn't really mean it.
He's not offering his jobs in the tech department, yeah. So does anybody have anything else?
Oh, one thing that I forgot before, I've usually got Dale to sign up with me. We both are members of the Utah Taxpayers Association. We started doing that years ago and we'd go to their meetings and we'd look around and say, boy, we're, these, this crowd is not our crowd. But it gave us a chance to hear what the people were saying to the Taxpayer Association. And I, and this year it was just virtual and I don't think Dale got on. But the Senate President and the Speaker and Ann Milner stood up there and, and told them that they were gonna fund education much more than they had in the past and they were, you know, they didn't mince words because they were talking to the Taxpayer Association. And I came away saying, okay, we bought some goodwill and, and it's helping if it can just be transferred from one legislative session to the next, see how long it goes. But that was, it was a good feel to know that they were willing to stand up there and say, yeah, we made a commitment and, and we're gonna honor it.
Yeah, I kind of left you off of the agenda, so yeah. Was that your reporter? Do you have someone?
That's it.
Okay. All right, this meeting is adjourned then.
Thank you.